Mayor Quill.
Here, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you, please be seated. Cork, we'll start out with our public to be heard, so if you would.
At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of our meeting. As a reminder, in pursuant to City Council rules of procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation, if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks should be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council should observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, personal attacks, or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Please, over here first, sir.
My name is David Grugan. I live at 13 Liberty Street, Apartment 3, here in Auburn. My recent little situation with Time Warner Cable had rendered a bill of atrocious price, and I was transferred to a media service, which is Time Warner Corporation down in South Carolina and North Carolina, in which I was presented with another package, which lowered my bill. But I also understand that there are 12 states in the United States that have senior citizen discount through Time Warner Corporation. Now, if there is a possibility that something could be worked out with Time Warner Corporation when their allocations come up for new contract, it would be really nice, because a lot of the senior citizens are on fixed incomes, in which they have just so much to do their monthly thing with. Now, what I was able to find out, talking with someone that got back to me about three days after I had the opportunity of talking with the president of Time Warner Corporation, in which he denied that he knew of the 12 states in the United States, a lady buddy named Roxanne from Massachusetts had called me and told me that the best way to go about this is to talk to the mayor or the city council about this, and it could be presented to you people and see what you could do when the allocations come up for Time Warner. Now, the situation is basically it would have to be strictly for senior citizens and not for social service, being that there would be certain obligations that senior citizens would have to meet under this criteria, meaning that basically, social service, I'm sure, would try to get in on this, but I'm sure that of an age limit, of a certain income, and all with whatever would come about. But the basic problem lies in, I don't know how New York State feels about this, whether it would have to be done to a federal situation or a local situation, but like I said, South Carolina, North Carolina, and 12 other states do have this, including Massachusetts. Now, what there is to do about it, I don't know. I know that I've checked out some of the senior developments here in the city, and most of the seniors are paying their cable bills. Striker Homes, Schwartz Towers, and Boyle Center, the people all have to pay a cable system. Now, basically, I was not, I'm not on a cable, a satellite, or, I mean, not satellite, but computer or telephone. It was just basically the television service that I'm interested in trying to see that something could be worked out. Maybe later on, they might want to work out something with the telephone or the cable system, or the computer systems, I don't know. But what I've ran across is, I've ran across this senior discount thing, and I'm trying to follow up on it and see what I can determine on the situation.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, very kindly.
Mr. Davis, I think you have your hand up, please.
To Mayor and City Council, I just want to give the city a round of applause for our Founder's Day this past weekend. It was, one word to describe it, it's fantastic. Mayor, City Council, all the city employees did a very excellent job, and I'm just overwhelmed of, in the tug-of-war competition, we had our coach, Mayor Quill, and Wade Counselor Greeney, and Mrs. McCormick was pulling on that rope, and our City Treasurer, boy, I tell you, I couldn't have done it without them and a few others. So, when we won that contest, I raised my hand, and I'll do it again publicly, let's hear it for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Norm, that's probably the only time you're going to see them all pulling on the same rope.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? No. I don't know what you meant by that, Counsel, but we'll find out sooner or later, so.
Thank you, good wood chair.
Mr. Grugan, I don't know if you're aware of our rules and regulations, but we're not allowed, during that session, we're not allowed to debate. The only thing really we're allowed to do is ask for clarification on something you mentioned, but I did see Mr. Selby and our Corporation Council taking notes, so they're well aware of what you're asking about, and I'm sure they'll do a follow-up on it. Fair enough. You're welcome. Approval of meeting minutes from July 18th of this year. We have a sponsor. Counsel Ruzika, second by Counsel Camardo. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counsel Greeney?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Ruzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Presentations or proclamations?
None.
Public announcements?
None.
City manager?
A couple things, Mayor. We are now out advertising for the Franklin, or, excuse me, Falcon Park, Casey Park project. Recall the fact that the city got generous grant, and we're going to provide in-kind contributions, but now we're advertising for the contractor to do the field work and the lighting improvements at those ball fields. And then, the other item is this, the leak that I sent an email out at the wastewater treatment plant. I put a little package in front of you that has an email from Mickey Murphy that generally describes what happened, and attached to that is a schematic, a process diagram, and a more detailed diagram for the engineers among us. The, it appears the pipe is, and Mark is here, if you want to come up, Mark, and just tell us what's going on since you're here.
Okay, what we have is a 30-inch reinforced concrete pipe. We originally thought that we just had maybe just a plant leak or something into it, then once we started digging, found it's got four leaks in it. This pipe comes off of the final clarifier, so, just to make the record clear, there's no health hazard, the water's clean, and, so that nobody gets all bent out of shape with this. I had a rep today come in, look at it to see cost on how to fix it. Probably the way to go is to slip-line it. Tomorrow, I've got another contractor coming in to go over another proposal, so hopefully by Monday or Tuesday, we can come up with a final price, cheapest and best way to fix this pipe. Pipe was installed roughly between 1969, 1970, which was part of the old 1972 plant upgrade on it. So, DEC has been notified, they're well aware of the situation, and right now, it's just a matter of getting pricing together and looking over to see what is the best option to fix this pipe.
Mark, can you explain how you discovered the problem?
We discovered the problem, it developed a sinkhole, and what turned out to be just a little sinkhole within three weeks turned into a big sinkhole. So, that's when we decided to get DPW down. We started digging, and took probably three days to figure out actually where the water was coming from. The schematic or the prints that you have there, it's kind of tough to read, but where this pipe is, there's a massive amount of pipes that are in this area.
There's a lot.
One of the options that we looked at was possibly just abandoning the pipe and moving it to the junction box A where this goes to, but with the amount of pipes and the electric conduit that's in the way, that's not feasible. This pipe comes off of final settling tank number one, and the schematics and the prints don't show a very good picture of it, but it actually goes under a concrete loading dock, which our 500 KW generator is sitting on top of. So, that's sitting on top of this pipe, so it doesn't make it any easier to replace it. So far, what, talking with the salesman on the slip-line, it seems like the most viable option to go with. So hopefully, Tuesday or Wednesday next week, we can have a final price, and somebody can make the decision on what to do with it.
Yeah. For this question, we might hear the thunder again. Your rough estimate of the cost?
I've never been involved in sliplining. I have, and even the salesman said that the cost on it, he was just, just a salesman coming in, and, I don't know, maybe Billy would have an idea. I guess we're going to have sliplining done on one of our, on Elm Street, so, I don't know what the...
Just put the pipe in. It costs as much as putting a new pipe in.
Does it? Yeah. So, we're talking about 100 feet of 30-inch reinforced concrete pipe.
I would imagine 30, 40 pounds.
How much?
Probably 300 to 400 dollars, probably. It's 100 feet, 30, 40 grand, probably. Do you agree, Mike?
Give me a city-county bake, Sal. Forget the tug-of-war.
Mark, maybe you know the answer to this, maybe you don't. For some reason, I thought it was possibly in the joints, or is it actually in the piping itself?
Well, it's actually in the joints. The joints were put in, they were grouted, and then the outside tar on it was, has come apart. We originally, we found the original leak, and in order to, in order to find the leak, we had to shut tanks down and do a little manipulating with the plant to get the water in, and once we started filling the pipe up, and hand digging four joints right in a row. There are possibly other leaks with, associated with this. One of the concerns that the contractor came up with is, one, we don't know how long this has been leaking. There are other sinkholes that are downstream from the pipe, so this is where I'm going to have another contractor come in and see, well, would it be feasible to slip it with a 27-inch HDP pipe? With the possibility of, you know, we could, we could slip-line this pipe, and maybe a year down the road, it could collapse. So, it's, it's a matter of looking at what the best option is.
Mark, as a follow-up, and I think Counsel Camardo wants to ask you something, but is there any, well, I believe we should be looking at the entire length of this. If we're going to slip-line or whatever, you know, it's like doing plumbing in your own home. You fix one problem, and you have three more downstream from where you started, so...
Right, right.
That's my concern.
Yeah, where this, where the joint is leaking, back in the 1996 upgrade on this particular tank, they replaced the 36-inch pipe, and then they made a transition from new 30-inch pipe to old 30-inch, to the old 30-inch pipe. So, there's probably a good 40, 50 feet that's fairly new, that was put in in the 90s, and like I said, this pipe here has been in since the early 70s. So there's, you know, probably 100, 110 feet of this pipe. So we would do the whole 110 feet right to the box, and hopefully that would work out.
Mark, do you think this would be something that they could use the camera and help locate any additional leaks, or maybe some?
This is, I'm going to get a hold of DPW tomorrow, see if we can bring the camera down and televise it, check the condition of it. That was one of the things that the salesman said. The problem, it's tough, because coming out of the tank, it comes down on the 45, goes for about 20 feet, then hits a 90, then a straight line down through. So I'm going to see if the city camera crew can't come down, get it televised, and then get a better idea on what we're looking at here. And that's, that's critical, too, is the condition of the pipe. There's no cutouts that need to be done on it, so it's just a straight shot, heat it, and we're done. Where, you know, we don't have to go through and cut any holes out or anything. So, hopefully, if the city crew is available, I could get them down, televise it, and then get a better picture of what we're looking at.
Well, I think that this does raise itself up to some level of priority. I think we can have the city manager, they could probably help you with a little drag there, regarding the camera, getting, see if that would be of any assistance in seeing if there's an additional damage?
Yeah.
Or repair work? Yeah, I think it's just a matter of whether they can launch the camera and get it through the whole pipe, so. Now, that's got a, it's got a, basically a cart that'll carry it down there, and manipulate it. It's on a joystick. I just don't know about the handles, so.
See, I don't know if the camera would be able to go down through, down to 45, and then make the bend around to 90. I'm not that familiar with how the operation works, but it's worth a try. I'm going to talk to Tommy Gay back in the morning and see what I come up with something. We can't go from the other end, because junction box A is full of water, and it's got a plug in it, so that we can be digging. So we've only got one means of access into it.
So, Mark, this is a critical part of the operation, this pipe?
Actually, no. The two final settling tanks are down, we have them down now for routine maintenance. So the plant isn't fully operational. You know, we had one day where we had to put the bag into the pipe, we notified DEC what we were doing, because we had to shut down part of the plant in order to get the water level down to get this plug into. So, now, the plan is 100% operational, and like I said, the water that's coming out here, it's all been treated, and DEC really didn't have a problem with it, they, you know, they know about it. So we're, we're still in compliance with everything. It's just...
Mark, with a 30-inch pipe, what is, is it always full capacity?
Yes.
Always?
Always.
Okay.
Yeah, it's full all the time.
Okay. At 100% capacity?
At 100% capacity, yeah. Yeah, this, this pipe was, was in in 1972 with the, with the two existing final clarifiers that were there. Goes from junction box A to manhole seven, which connects into the new FSTs, then from there, it goes to our post-aeration, where we boost the dissolved oxygen up and then into disinfection. So, that's all back online, we're working, we're running fine. It's, it's just, you know, the pipes are broke. We can't leave the tanks down, you know, over the winter time, so it's not really a massive, critical thing that has to be pushed, but, you know, I've got contractors down there, you know, with equipment sitting there.
Mark, I just have a couple questions. I know we spent a lot of money on the plant over the years, is this something that should have been inspected and checked a while ago, before we got to this critical?
No, actually, when we were digging, and, and this is how we found out, where on the south end of the pipe, you could see that it's all new, crusher run, it was filled, and then on the north side of it is all dirt. So that pipe, this is the first time this pipe's ever been exposed. So in 90, back in the 90s, when the engineering study was done, it's just assumed that, you know, a 30-inch pipe like this, this is really kind of an unusual situation. It's not like a, you know, a water line or something, but this is kind of an unusual situation.
And is there other areas that we should be checking, too, so we're not up against...
No, because actually, that's very few of the old piping from the 1970s is left. This is probably one of them. The only other piping that's really left from, from the old plant are the catch basins and drains. But about 97% of the piping down there is new. This is, just happens to be one of those things that, when it rains, it pours, and it doesn't stop.
So other than this, we're in pretty good shape down there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Next week, the overflow retention facility project is coming to a close. We're going to be doing more testing on the tanks, on the equipment, go through simulation, make sure that the pumps work, the system works, and, other than a few routine maintenance things that need to be addressed, we're, you know, we're doing, doing the best we can with what we have.
Mark, what the, how, what's the static head on that pipe? I mean, you got it into the tanks, how high are the tanks above the pipe?
The pipe is eight foot down into ground, and you've got 12 and a half foot of head pressure on it.
It's like about maybe 20 feet, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
And there's no, that's all gravity at that point, right?
All gravity, yeah, this is all gravity, it's not a force main.
So, and there's not a lot of dynamic head loss there?
Yeah, there's not a lot of dynamics on it.
Okay.
So that's, that's what, you know, that's why it makes it an unusual kind of situation on, you know, being, you know, leaking the way it is, and the way the leaks are, it's one, four pipes right in a row, bang, bang, bang.
Basically, at the joints of the...
Right in the joints, yep. Yeah, we filled it up, we di-tested it, made sure that we had the right pipe, and sure enough, right in a row, all four. So that we, at that point, we just stopped the operation, not disturb any more pipe to dig any further back, and then just say, all right, what do we do from here?
Okay.
So.
Thanks, Mark, thank you.
But there's no way the entire capacity of pipe, pipe is leaking through these joints? That's, that's a big plus.
We don't know if more joints, you know, going north on the pipe are leaking. We kind of suspect it, because if you stand in line with this pipe, you could see four sinkholes right down in a row, all the way down through. This, this could have been leaking for a year, something that we just haven't, you know, just never came to the surface.
Okay.
So it's one of those unpredictable kind of...
But what I'm saying, you're saying the lines at capacity, I mean, there's no airspace in it?
No, there's no air.
So I'm just saying, there's, there's really no physical way, just a joint, unless that pipe is basically severed, that the entire capacity of that pipe is going into the ground. There's just no way.
Yeah. Yeah.
So some of it still is going downstream into the remainder, most of it, I should say.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And I, and we're not getting, the DEC, obviously, they're not alarmed over, terribly.
No, no, because, I mean, the water's already gone through the treatment.
Right.
It's, this is the final part of the...
This is the final piece, yeah.
...process before it gets disinfected, so, you know, there, there's probably thousands of these pipes in the United States doing the same thing. It's, I mean, that's, it's a known fact, you know.
Okay.
So, but we're, we're in 100% operation, we're not out of compliance, and now it's just a matter of gathering everybody together and making a decision.
Mm-hmm, very good.
So...
Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Mayor, we also had a meeting today with the school district, John Rossi and Chief Nagel, and I'll just ask John to give you an update, but regarding primarily the SROs and the budget for them.
Yes, Counsel Smith joined us today, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. The main part of it was to discuss the new contract for the school resource officers, and it's basically the same configuration as it was last year, where the city will provide four officers, two at the high school, one at the middle school, and one floater to the elementary schools. And the contract calls for the officers to be there on a 10-month basis, and last year, the school district paid the cost for those 10 months, for those officers, at approximately And this year, the new expense to the school district is going to be $231,000, almost $232. What we did discover, and Lisa Green, of course, is working for the school district now, and she ran her numbers and did discover that, excuse me, the city had budgeted the sum of $210,000 for this revenue source, and now it's coming in at an additional $22,000. As the manager stated correctly to me, we still have to pay for the services, even though our revenue stream was less than what we, we anticipated, less than what we're actually going to receive, but we still have to pay for the officer's services. So, we will be bringing very shortly, by the end of the month, a resolution to enter into a contract with the school district, and they, their board will meet the end of the month also, and we'll put that one together. The other part of the meeting focused around the crossing guards, and the chief and his staff have outlined the areas where some crossing guards are now going to be eliminated due to the revenues which were not available to fully fund what was utilized last year. I'm sure the chief can explain very thoroughly where these crossing guards are going to be deployed, and he has a very good outline of where they will be, where they are being eliminated, and he stated at the meeting that he felt that safety was not being compromised, and I would let him comment on that more in detail, which I'm sure he will, I believe he's going to be here next week, on parking, and a modernization or an updating of our vehicle and traffic ordinance. The other aspect of the meeting was to discuss with the school district, the payments that the city makes to the school district for use of their facilities, and the payments they make to the city for the use of the city facilities, probably mainly the ice at Casey Park. And those discussions will continue further at a later date in order to, I guess, equalize those payments back and forth, so that neither the school district nor the city is experiencing a shortfall due to these services and use of facilities. So we will report that again later, at a later date.
Just a couple questions I have, getting back to the SROs. What's the, do you know the net cost to the city for what this costs the city taxpayers to provide that service to the school district? Do you have those numbers, or can you get them for us, or?
I believe that, that $231 or $232 is the number.
That's the net cost for the city?
That's for the 10 months, no.
And that's the cost to the city, but what do we get from the school, from that, $232?
Well, they're going to pay us.
They're going to pay it completely?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so there's no cost to the city at all for the use of that program?
Correct.
Very good. Very good. I have one other item, but I want to bring it up under other business, so.
John, the crossing guards, there was to be more dialogue, correct, as far as with the school district?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, the Chief Nagel did present a citywide diagram as to where they are deployed, are going to be deployed starting the school year, and a list of all of the intersections which they're going to be at, and a list of the intersections that are being eliminated. I think he mentioned a few of them, which were four-way stops, and he didn't believe that it would be required for the crossing guards to be there, and the superintendent did mention that there's going to be a meeting with the district, with parent-teacher organizations, and in order to attempt to secure volunteer... with parent-teacher organizations, and in order to attempt to secure volunteers for those areas where they may feel it is necessary for the safety of the children to assist our crossing guards. And the chief did state that he would be, he and whoever on his staff is necessary would attend that meeting also, to work with the school district and the parents to provide those services.
Mr. Selby, you stated you're going to carry on under other business.
Uh, yes.
Alright, thank you. Presentation, petitions, communications? Secure resolutions?
No.
Bond ordinance number eight, that's the first reading.
Okay. Yes. I'll just, if it's acceptable, I'll read the first three sections and the last two.
Agreeable, Council. Please, sure.
Okay. Bond ordinance number eight of 2013, a bond ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $4 million serial bonds to finance the cost of reconstruction of the city water supply and distribution system. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. Section one, the City of Auburn, New York, is hereby authorized to undertake the reconstruction of the city water supply and distribution system and the acquisition of replacement equipment, machinery and apparatus required, including replacement of the transmission main, valves, interconnections, and the addition of fire hydrants within the Franklin Street right-of-way at an estimated maximum cost of $4 million, and to use an aggregate $4 million in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated costs of the aforesaid object or purpose. Section two, it is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforesaid specific object or purpose is $4 million. Said amount is hereby appropriated, therefore, and the plan for the financing thereof shall consist of the issuance of $4 million in serial bonds of the city authorized to be issued pursuant to this ordinance. Section three, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforesaid specific object or purpose is 40 years pursuant to paragraph one, section 11A of the local finance law. Section 13, this ordinance is not subject to a mandatory or permissive referendum. Section 14, the council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. Section 15, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Mayor, Bill, did we get the bids? Yeah, could, could we?
Please.
We had a bid opening on this, so we actually have some numbers now, and next, next week we'll bring back an actual authorization to award a contract.
Yes, we actually got, had nine bidders. It's one of the best turnouts we've ever had. They were quite hungry. Our engineer's estimate was like 4.1 million for the construction alone. We'll be able to, the lowest complete bid was F. Rizzo Construction, in the amount of 3 million, well, it was 3,133,834. That's the base bid and with the alternate, because we're going to be disturbing roughly a little less than half the road going down there and all those intersections. It only makes sense to pave the road and go from curb to curb and do it, pave it, and that, that alternate was 213,735 for a total bid, base bid with alternate, to Rizzo Construction for 3,347,569. So I mean, that was 750,000 lower than the engineer's estimate. So that was very good news. Throw in the, the engineering or the consultant for the inspection, that will also be, I think, 223,000 will be proposing to go with Erdman Anthony next week. There'll be a council resolution up for your consideration, and roughly about 12% contingency, and that adds up to about the $4 million bond. And again, when council, you're bonding the total project, but we always will come back to you for every contract. Next week, you'll give us permission to spend the base bid and alternate, hopefully, and the construction inspection and the contingency, we will not spend that unless we come back with change orders to council and you vote on it, okay?
So, so Bill, assuming...
The total project's about 4 million.
So Bill, if everything goes great, great guns, and obviously according to plan, when would it's, the construction begin?
Well, assuming that you will consider this and vote on it next week, we will, that the next day I'll have the notice of award. They have like 10 days to get their insurances and bonds in. We should be giving the notice to proceed around the second week of September. I would imagine that would be in the contractor's best interest to stay with the pipe and get it, either all done or almost all of it done before he breaks for the winter season. He'll come back in the spring, maybe do the, any cross connections, any restoration, and we, we have the contract, I think it's to June 30th. But I, I would imagine that the bulk of all the piping, hopefully, will be done, depending on how big a crew he comes in, he could be done by Thanksgiving, or it could be the end of January. Depends on if he gets 100-foot a day or 170-foot a day. I mean, there's a lot of, this is a big pipe, it's in a city setting, a lot of, lot of obstacles, but I think, hopefully, you know, he'll finish up almost all the pipe this year and then do the restoration next year. And this is good news, I mean, because this is good to do this now and get that done because the condition of that pipe is terrible.
It's absolutely necessary.
Doug, on that note, we had talked at one point, since this is coming in under bid, maybe a pump station to help those people up in the east end with the water pressure off of that line? Wouldn't now be the time to explore that?
I, I don't know, we'll, we'll talk, I'll talk to engineering and municipal utilities and see if that could be incorporated in this project, if, if it would even help.
Yeah.
It may be a separate line that we need to put that on, so.
I know, it was floated around as an option at one point.
Yeah.
Won't the, won't the new pipe help with pressure on that east end, though? No?
No, the, it's because of the placement of the reservoir doesn't put enough head, those, that east end is, there's not a big enough elevation difference to create the pressure.
Static head is up there.
Gravity doesn't help us.
But can we just explore that option?
Yeah, yeah.
Council Resolution number 92 of 2013, setting a time and place for a special meeting. We have a sponsor. Council Comardo, seconded by Council Razika. Council, I would just advise that this is a walk-on, so is there any objection to adding this to the agenda?
No.
Thanks, it was Comardo or Razika?
Was.
Sorry to be a pain. Council Resolution number 91 of 2013 by Councilor Comardo, seconded by Council Razika. Whereas the City of Auburn and contiguous towns have engaged for the past several years in discussions for the water sewer consolidation and regionalization program, together with Kiuga County Water and Sewer Authority. And whereas funds were received from the New York State Department of State to assist with this project. And whereas it is necessary that a final decision be made as to the participation for such a water and sewer consolidation, regionalization program with the contiguous towns and the Kiuga County Water and Sewer Authority. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council shall convene in a special meeting on Monday, August 19th, 2013, in room 315, Memorial City Hall, Auburn, New York, at 6:00 PM, in order to move forward with the proposed program for consolidation and regionalization, and that the contiguous towns and the Kiuga County Water and Sewer Authority be invited to attend in order to discuss finalization of this project. And be it further resolved that the Auburn City Clerk provide the necessary statutory public notice for the special meeting.
Mr. Selby, want to add anything?
You might recall, a few weeks ago, I mentioned this, and even earlier before the budget, got into the budget process, that the towns wanted one final meeting with the city council, rather than those of us who attend those task force meetings, they wanted to actually meet with the elected leaders, and that would be the purpose of this meeting. And at that meeting, we would ask the council to entertain, you know, ending the process through a resolution, or if it sounds like it's something you'd want to continue, to have us continue that negotiation.
Doug, would that take place in council chambers?
No.
Well, we thought it, because there's no other agenda items, we thought we could just meet upstairs.
Room 315.
It'd be open to the public, obviously, but...
That's why I asked, just in case we might get a high volume of, of people, would it be better in here, or?
We could do it either place. We were thinking it might be easier to have a work session atmosphere where everybody sat at the same table, but whatever the council's pleasure is.
How about, it's a compromise, let's plan on having it upstairs, and if we get an overflow, we can always move downstairs.
Yeah.
Fair enough, council?
Absolutely.
And I don't know if there's anything else booked for that night, and for, if there's another planning board or zoning or whatever, so.
No, it's clear.
It's clear, thank you. Clerk, have you called a roll, please?
Council Graney?
Yes.
Council Comardo?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Aye.
Council Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Local laws?
None.
Table legislation?
None.
Mr. Fusco has pulled his for the, can't think what I want to say here, for his presentation in regards to the environmental.
Right.
Draw a blank there.
Mr. Selby? I handed out at your desks a, another finance organization, after I met with a couple councilors early this week, I put this one together, I labeled it Finance Org. Number Four, and I'll just kind of walk through it with you. At the top of that chart, if everybody has this, we would have a position called Director of Finance, which in essence replaces the comptroller. And then we would make the treasurer the assistant comptroller or deputy director of finance, so that treasurer position would, would be Bob Guth here. And under that organization would be the assessor, parking administration, purchasing, which we would like to work to outsource that in the future. That's currently a single part-time employee, the accounting functions and the payroll functions. So it's, it's similar to the current structure, however, it does create and designate a second in command. We've had such difficulty getting a comptroller, keeping a comptroller, that there's a distinct advantage of having somebody that is, got that title, that could step in and officially fill in if we have the same kind of instability in the comptroller position we've had in the past. As part of this, I would propose that we adjust the salary of the comptroller. We had difficulty recruiting, getting somebody with the qualifications we were looking for, who was also willing to move to Auburn, was, was a particular challenge. So what I did was, was propose that instead of the base salary being, I think it was 8666, to move it to 95,000, which was the mid-range of the tier-one salary range for the comptroller. So that's, in essence, the proposal for, for finance, this iteration. Below that, because we've been considering finance and some other things at the same time, I'll just walk through the second part of this. There'd be a position called Director of Admin and Technical Services. Under that position would be Human Resources, Engineering, Planning, Community Services, and Capital Programs, none of which would be designated departments anymore. Those would be sections underneath the Department of Administration and Technical Services. So that would, you know, if that position were somebody like Jenny Haynes, then we would maintain one equivalent department head, but everybody else in these other areas would not be full department heads, partly because they really don't have large staffs and they're smaller operations compared to the big departments like Public Works, Police and Fire. I've attached on the second page a summary of how that might work financially. This isn't the option that would save the most money, that some of the earlier options I provided would, but it does give some stability and some ability, hopefully, to attract and retain some special expertise in budgeting and finance at a time when we really need it.
Doug, in regards to Director, Director of Administration, Technical Services, are you looking for anything, any particular type of degree, education, or skill sets, or is that kind of open at this point?
It's primarily the ability to manage and lead group, so.
Doug, I just have a few comments if I can. I spent a lot of time this morning talking to Jim Orman, who I would strongly recommend that you'd spent some time with, especially looking at some reorganization in our finance department. And I just want to talk about a few things here if I could. Jim's got almost three times the, the budget that the city has, he's got about $150 million budget there. Jim makes about $70,000 a year, he's the county treasurer. His assistant makes $83,000. He has 13 people underneath him, or 13 people in his office, including himself. Out of those 13, there's three part-time people, and there's 10, there's, well, there's eight clerks, and there's Jim and his assistant. So I'd like you to talk to him on getting some advice on how some things are done at the county. Like I said, they got social services, they got a very big budget that they work with compared to what we're, what we're working with. And as I spoke in the past, I like to see some of these areas where we're going to bring substantial savings at the table, and I would like to see a Director of Finance and not have an assistant. I think maybe if we gave, and a clerk's, a little bit more duties on the treasurer's side and on the comptroller's side, we could work in those areas where we're not bringing another high-paying position into this, into your, your, your management structure. Also, we talked about, a while ago, we talked about an assistant city manager, and I know tonight you're talking about Director of Administration and Technical Services. I would like to see an assistant city manager with either have some kind of financial background or human resource background that can take some of those responsibilities that the city needs to move forward. So I'd like to see somebody in that area with, with that kind of background if possible. And by having somebody with some financial background, we could have somebody in charge that knows what's going on with the budget, so in case there's a loss in the finance area, that we could have somebody else that would be on board or up to snuff on what's happening with the city finances beside yourself.
I think we could do with the, I agree with the finance, the assistant city manager being a finance person, and we pretty much could do that by making the Director of Finance the assistant city manager. So that's something we could do. The, the key thing, though, is getting this comptroller, Director of Finance, where we ought to, whatever we want to call him or her, we got to get this position, this, this department is the nucleus of all departments. If we can't have people give us the numbers, we don't have people crunching the numbers, then everything else is going to fall apart. And because we've seen such inconsistencies within that department within the last two and a half years, it's made things much difficult for every department, let alone council. The, another part I do, I mean, again, there's no perfect plan, we're not going to find a perfect plan, I mean, I have my own questions on this as well, but I do like this model better than any of the other ones. I do like the comptroller and the assistant comptroller, and that wouldn't be an added position, we already have a treasurer, unless you were talking about cutting the treasurer position?
Yes, right, consolidating, no, still.
Unless you would, unless you cut it, that, cut that position. The, this, the savings would be roughly $83,000 worth of savings, we'd all like to see more, but I, I do think this is, in my opinion, going towards the right path. We can make that assistant, I'm in agreement with Councilor Comardo that we, I like to make the assistant city manager the Director of Finance, but I'd like to have the comptroller come in and have him look at the department, John, to your point, and looking at how he can restructure that department, he or she, when I say he. And they may be able to fine-tune that department, downsize it if necessary. We do have eight, eight people in that department. We do have eight people in that department, and your point with the county is a good one. But I would like to have the Director of that position, or the Department Head, whoever you want to call this person, the opportunity to restructure that particular department. The framework here, I'm more agreeable with this framework.
Now Doug, let's talk about the Treasurer position, that's in the charter numerous times, so that's going to be hard to take out of the...
It's throughout the city code, yeah, probably thirty or more times, it's mentioned that the Treasurer shall do this, or will do that, so the code is permeated with that term, that title. So I'd recommend, whatever structure we have, we preserve the title in some fashion that somebody...
Or somebody in that department can take the title of Treasurer.
Right.
Correct?
Right, I think it's important, whatever the working title might be, that is also the Treasurer for the city.
It doesn't have to be Department Head, it could be Treasurer, it could be a...
Well, today, today the Treasurer is not a Department Head.
Well, I'm saying, he oversees the Treasurer, the duties of the Treasurer, the City Treasurer, which takes, is the area where you collect money.
Yeah.
So he's overseeing that aspect of that area.
Right.
I think we need to look carefully at that.
Could I ask?
Before we get ourselves in a predicament that we can't get out of.
Yeah, it's a snake in the grass there, it could bite us.
Doug, on your proposal here, you got charged junior engineer to waste water and sewer, how is that, how do you...
Well, we have a number of, well, three engineers that work for Bill, and between them, I think there's about one full-time equivalent that does work in support of water and wastewater. Now, the budgets for water and wastewater haven't been set to accommodate charging back to them those, that engineer's time, but I think between those three engineers, as they work on not just water and wastewater, but also maybe some landfill issues, they should charge their time to those enterprise accounts, and that would take the equivalent of a full-time engineer out of the general fund, and basically that would lighten the obligation of the general fund by one step.
But if those enterprise accounts come up short now, they're going to be charged back to the general fund because you're charging that individual enterprise fund that amount, correct?
Right. I'm saying, as part, I mean, things like this sometimes have to evolve, and we'll have to either look at the budgets as they stand today and see if any of that's even possible to implement this budget year, but obviously going into next budget year, we have an opportunity to incorporate that kind of a change.
Because some of these enterprise funds were short last year, and I just want to make sure that we're going to, just because we're charging more money to that, we're going to have to subsidize it through the general fund.
Well, water and sewer are balanced right now, but whether they can afford to take on some hours from a general fund employee, I can't tell you right now, especially in light of what Mark just reported on, that was an unforeseen cost impact.
So we got to make sure when we're coming up with savings on the bottom, that there are true savings, and they're not going to cost us money to the general fund afterwards. I know you got eighty-two thousand dollars here in savings, part of that is ninety thousand dollars that you'll be charging to water and sewer for the junior engineer.
Well, I'm basically saying, some of this might not be implemented till the next budget cycle, so what we could implement, we would, depending on what the council wants to do.
The plus, which has been mentioned, is that taxpayers will still be on the hook for a portion of these funds paid by the city water and sewer, and I think it's a good move, as long as we can justify the actual work that this person does, that an outside town could not question that we're charging them to pay for the service, which obviously we can. So here, the bright side of this move is you have the county paying for the service, not just on the backs of the taxpayers...
City taxpayers.
City taxpayers, rather, and if we have, if we do have a, I mean, we're going to have a problem either, which way we go, whether we have the water and sewer fund pay for this, or whether we have the general fund pay for this. If we don't put it under this, we're going to have, the general fund's going to have to pay for this, and we're short money there in the general fund. So here, at least, you're going to get a portion paid for by, by the outside users, instead of just the city users. So either, either way you look at it, you're going to have to, someone's going to have to pay the bill, I'd rather have the users pay for the bill.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but we got to be careful, because we got set rates with the users right now, and I don't know if you're going to be able to fluctuate that rate for, we got contracts in effect, don't we?
Yes, but our water rates in particular float with whatever rate you set for residential.
I'm talking about the outside users, though. The outside users, outside the city.
Yeah, the water rate, it changes when we change ours.
Doug, I'm pretty much in agreement with everything said by council here, I, just to me, this is the best plan so far.
Yeah.
With some tweaking, I like this fleshed out, personally like this fleshed out a little more. I do like the concept of the Assistant City Manager, but I would like that with a strong financial background, because I think, and if we probably do this the correct way, we could almost have a three-tiered system with a good financial background. So I'm not saying it's totally agreeable with everyone in council, but that's the way I am looking at it. In response to Counselor Graney with the word Treasurer, I wonder if there's some way we can, we can play with that Comptroller slash Treasurer, or whatever, and I don't know the legalities, but that's Mr. Rossi's call, but I think this is our best plan so far.
Just want to express caution with that, so...
I agree, Counselor, I agree.
Yeah, I agree, if we can, I guess, move forward with this model, and as Mayor just said, flesh it out a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it agreeable?
This is definitely a step in the right direction.
I would, I would just, I'd like you to talk to Jim Orman to see if he's got any suggestions on the county end of it, because he's working side-by-side with us, and maybe there's possibility of the county taking over some areas that would be beneficial to the city.
Counselor, without saying I did agree with you in that regard.
Thank you.
Don't do that.
In the purchasing area, I think there's one area we can look to possibly outsource to the county, along with our tax issue.
Let them collect their own county tax.
Yes.
I want you to have some clear, somewhat clear directions.
Yeah, definitely, we got to go in this with our eyes wide open, that's true.
We'll refine this, and I'll talk to Jim Orman, and come back with some more information, and then actually ask for a resolution to prove it. Okay.
In regards to Boards and Commissions update, Counselor, Counselor Graney, I'll jump out here, and Counselor Graney and I both met briefly this week, we were both pushed for a time, so we didn't have a long time to talk to each other. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to come up with a list of questions, and propose it to each of the boards, in also meeting with the individual boards, and to try to get their feel for things. So having said that, I would also request that the other members of council, if you have any specific questions, if you could forward them on to us, so we could work from somewhere. Am I...
Yeah.
Okay.
Sums it up. It would be advantageous to look at some boards and see if there's any enough overlap to where we can put these together.
That was in the back of my mind, Counsel, I just want to get an idea of where they're all coming from, and what they do, but I think that was Doug's idea also, right from the very beginning, to either disband or combine them, or whatever is necessary, so. Some of them, I believe, for example, the ZBA and the planning are probably required under the...
Yes, you're not going to do much with those, but there are several that are inactive now, and it's a question whether you should even continue having them on the books.
And Neighborhood Commission, they don't do an awful lot, do I? I encourage...
We love you, too.
Counsel, we'll leave it up to you, it's under other business, it's yours.
What's that?
Oh, go ahead. I have one item, then, Mayor.
Please.
If I may. Recall, a couple weeks ago, I gave you an update on the Mac Studios project, they're looking to expand their facility, they're challenged with space right now, and the adjacent land that had been in their sights for a number of years is encumbered by a wetland. In our discussions with Peter Makowitz, he'd asked that, we're aware of some issues, and then I'll tell you what he's looking for us from, what he's looking for the city to do. In his bullet points that he provided, he said, "Mac Studios and the city have been in discussions regarding this property since 2008. Even prior to that, there were city managers that had made commitments to set aside the property for Mac Studios for expansion purposes. Right now, Mac Studios is bursting at the seams, and the restricted space is holding them back from getting business that they're capable of handling. Off-site warehousing is inefficient and expensive, again, holding the company back from its fullest potential." And part of this expansion would be onsite warehousing. As designs for the new building were being developed this past spring, the city informed Mac Studios that there are wetlands on this parcel, and in working with the Army Corps of Engineers and the attorney for Mac Studios, a mitigation plan has been developed, which includes adjusting the site plan and paying an in lieu of fee of approximately forty-one thousand dollars to the Army Corps of Engineers for actual wetland mitigation. The proposal would be to split that fee equally between the city and Mac Studios. The city's sewer line encumbers the property and needs to be moved in order to accommodate the expansion, we've had staff discussions about that, and certainly engineering and municipal utilities would prefer that that line not be under the foundation of a new building. During this past spring, Mac Studios grieved the assessment on their current facility. After doing an appraisal, they showed their value should be 1.4 million. In other words, they were being appraised at a rate higher, they went to the Board of Assessment and had that reduced. Now, the Mac Studios has expressed concern about being overcharged or over-assessed for multiple years, and it is a point that they want to make as they negotiate the land transfer. And then the project itself is scheduled to go through the planning, as well as be presented to Ada, where there will be a request for a pilot. So that's kind of a summary of, you know, positions on this issue. Now, what we've been asked to do is to commit to several things. And these things, these are not things that I feel that the city manager can commit to. One would be the finalization of a purchase agreement outlining the transfer of city-owned property adjacent to the facility at no cost. Recall, I mentioned that we had thought initially the property might be worth thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, that was without recognizing that it's encumbered by wetlands and essentially has no development value unless those wetlands are removed, so hence the request for an agreement that the land be transferred at no cost. That the city will commit to move the sewer line, that the city does not require, and we, this is a fact, we don't require the use of a gas line that encroaches on the property, that was a point of discussion, they wanted us to move the gas line, but in fact, that gas line can be disconnected, and we're better off reconnecting at the back of the property. And then the big one is that the city will pay or provide tax abatement in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand for our share of the wetland mitigation. So I believe probably the best approach would be for the council, if you're willing, to formally enter into an agreement with Mac Studios to memorialize any or all of these that are acceptable, you know, to allow that project to go forward.
Well, Doug, can we get some estimates and move into sewer line, what it's going to cost us?
I, Bill, did we ever estimate the sewer line cost?
We probably have an estimate upstairs, but I...
Yeah. Yeah, we could... Can you get all those figures out to us, so we can take a look at them, please?
Yeah, I will, I will.
I'm sorry, on the sewer line, he wants to connect into the sewer line?
No, he wants it removed.
He wants it removed.
Well, there's a sewer line that leaves the street, crosses his property under the proposed building footprint, and it's more or less a lateral, I think it's six or eight inches, is that right, Bill?
So it's not really a crickle line, correct?
No, it does serve, it does serve Mac Studios, but...
Wasn't he having a water problem as well? There's no storm sewers?
Yes.
He had a number of issues.
That's, storm sewers, streetlights. Different issue, yeah.
Okay, all right. If you could send that list...
I will.
And some class sign, rough estimates.
Okay.
It'd make it easier for all of us.
Anything else, Counsel?
I'm going to jump on tonight, then. First of all, I agree with Mr. Davis, we had a good weekend, Founder's Day weekend, it was a lot of fun, Friday evening, Saturday. In front of me is the winning trophy for the tug-of-war. The way it was set up with Mr. Chapman, the losing team was to purchase the tug-of-war trophy, and this, hopefully this will continue for many years going back and forth. I would like to thank Counselor Graney, our City Clerk, Debbie, and Mr. Davis, our anchorman, for having a lot of fun. We ended up doing four pulls, originally it started out the best two out of three, which we won. The fourth one, they, the county had some extra people, so we pulled in some recruiters, some people, one was a retired city employee who helped us out, and it was, it was meant to be just a good time, and to have fun. When I looked at the county employees, they had some, some big people there, so even the new county manager, Suzanne Sinclair, was there, so it was a good time, and there was a lot of jokes, and it was good-natured fun, and personally, I think that's part of what Founder's Day should be, just having a good time and a lot of good memories, so...
We had Billy, Tony, and Norm as anchors, my goodness.
Norm was the anchor.
Couple of big, we had Officer Callet and Officer Spengler, who were, you know, we had some good people.
Jessica Corcoran.
Jessica Corcoran, too, not...
Now, the losing team bought the trophy, I could see they had a very large budget for it.
Well, what we come to find out is, Mr. Chapman went to a trophy shop, told them what he wanted, the guy went in the back room, brought it out, the gentleman there, and he said, "Someone ordered a case of these a few years back, never picked them up," so he just happened to have one.
I thought that was a gun he was holding.
Now, Mayor, there were some side bets going on with some dinners, how did that end up?
The sheriff and I had a side bet, so that's, I told him I would, I'd be glad to buy him lunch, but he too busy, he'll never show up, so that's the only one I'm aware of, Counselor, so. Couple other items that I have, Doug, I've been asked this before, and I think we did some research on it, but a gentleman stopped me at Founder's Day, he's in an electric-powered wheelchair, and they're wondering if we can do something in the downtown area where they can plug in recharge and so forth, so I don't know if it's something we want to get into or we should get into, but if we could just take a look at that and see what's going on. And I have a request from Mr. Chapman, do we have a meeting scheduled for the 22nd, City-City-County combined? Is that on the agenda, or no?
That is on the proposed agenda for the 22nd.
Okay, all right, I'll make contact with him. And then lastly, counselors, you have in front of you an email that I received from Dave Dom from Auburn Baseball, and also, I sent an email out today, liking, we would like to participate in the ballgame September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, or 4th. I spoke with Mr. Rossi yesterday when I received this, my concern, and I'll let Mr. Rossi explain, but my concern is us handing out tickets to a ballgame, so, Mr. Rossi, if you would?
Well, certainly, the issue here is that the tickets have a value, and if each member of the mayor and council are getting a hundred apiece, it's going to well exceed the limits of our ethics statute and the New York State Public Officers Law, so I think an alternate method by the ball club of providing free admission for people is better than, and is more legal than having them distributed to this body and have you hand them out. So it's a nice gesture, but I think there's a better way to do it.
Is that agreeable, Counsel?
Yeah, I would think that that's achievable, I mean, they could be put at the, like, the downtown merchants like Servos, for instance.
Whatever means they have desire. Is there any date better than others, counselors?
First works for me.
First, which I believe is Sunday night.
First is a Sunday, yes.
First is a Sunday, Sundays are good.
Sunday, yeah, that would be good.
Weekend, too, I think.
Yeah. And then I'll evoke a mayoral privilege here, instead of one person throwing out the first pitch, we all will. Instead of one person throwing out the first pitch, we all will.
Well, I got shoulder surgery. I can't, I'm still recovering from that. I don't believe I should be throwing it.
Throw it, I'll just throw it under it.
Throw out my arm.
I thought he did it, Counselor. Okay, then you could be the catcher. All right, we'll figure it out, but instead of signaling out one individual, I'd rather all of us do it if we could, so. Fair enough.
There is a follow-up on this week, weekend, isn't the car show downtown for Founder's Day?
Our show is this Saturday downtown, and I don't have to exact hours, but it is downtown.
And also, I believe they extended that offer to the county, too, on the tickets.
Oh, did they? Okay, great.
I believe so.
They'll probably want a rematch on the tug-of-war, but we're in training for next year.
This Saturday is the car show or Sunday?
Saturday. Anything else, Counsel? We have a request for executive session?
I have one item, Your Honor, that I think is the best category for it, and it deals with, I'll put it under public safety.
Any motion for executive, Counsel Grady, seconded by Counsel Rezika. Clerk of your call roll, please.
Counsel Grady?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Rezika?
Yes.
Aye. We'll be in recess for executive session.